Are you ready?
Yep.
Yep.
Good evening, I'd like to call to order a regular meeting of the City Council of Satellite Beach, March 18th, 2015, approximately 7:00 PM. Please join Councilman Brymer in a moment of silence and a pledge.
Can I have a moment of silence, please? Thank you, if you'll join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 3, Citizens' Comments. This is for non-Agenda items. Floor is open for Citizens' comments on non-Agenda items.
Ron Giugudis, resident of Satellite Beach. Good evening, Council. It's come to my attention through a conservancy program that I'd like the Council to request staff to look into COE's grants. There are grants out there that perhaps can be capitalized for everyone along the beaches, including the city. Secondly, I'd like to address another topic as far as the road on Roosevelt. I am working on that project to present to y'all as far as what a citizen's take would be on the road. I'm sure the engineer is doing a fine job, but we'll go from there. Thirdly, I would like to address this past Beachcaster that came out. And I would like for somebody on Council or staff to take a look at this, because I believe the Beachcaster, I do not believe that it was properly authorized by the Council to be released. I believe it was just, let's get it out, and there was no formal recognition as far as the cost. I'd like for everyone to review that area just to make sure that it was done right. Thank you.
Thank you. On the COE's, we'll pass it on whether it's Carrie's woman to please take a look at it. Your last question concerning the Beachcaster, I can tell you there's probably not been a Beachcaster that has been looked at more than this Beachcaster. And the information in it and so forth, and we did authorize this Beachcaster to be published.
More than once.
More than once, yeah, we did. And I think the Beachcaster came out extremely well and really hits to the point that what we need infrastructure-wise within the city. And to all those who worked on it, I'm going to tell you thank you. I actually brought mine because I thought it was very good. So, thank you. Floor is still open?
Dale Abrams, CRA resident. Are we having technical difficulties tonight with YouTube? No. Okay. I would like to thank Raised on Hoakakes for putting in a post regarding Daniel and what has happened to him and regarding the fund that was set up by someone in the community. I think that that's really important as far as that's concerned. And I would also like us all to have him in our prayers. I am praying for him on a daily basis to get healthy and recover from this particular incident. The other thing I would like to talk about is it's been almost a month now, and we had a dead woman on Shell Street. I don't live that far from there, and I haven't heard a word about a perpetrator. So, is perpetrator still out there? I am concerned about my safety. I am becoming much more aware, I usually am pretty aware, but I'm becoming more aware of people in the community riding bicycles, walking, you know, carrying lots of bags and things. But I am very, very concerned about that because there has been nothing in the media concerning this incident. The other thing was is that I found it very interesting, one thing I learned regarding this incident in the Torres article, is I didn't know that from 2009 to now, we've had nine homicides from Indy-Atlantic to Satellite Beach. So, that is very concerning also. And I don't think we're sleepy anymore. And I don't think we're Mayberry. And I think we have some issues in the community, and I think a lot of citizens in the community want to get a handle on those issues and address them and go forward and try to make this community a better place. I know I would, a safer place. And I think it's very important for us to be concerned about the young people in this community, because they could be sitting in your spot someday. Maybe some of these kids might be your grandkids, your kids, but it's really, really important to be concerned about our youth in this community. And I look forward to the school board, the school meeting at Satellite High School on the 31st. I, even though I don't have any children in the school, I am concerned about the children that are in this community.
Okay, thank you. Concerning Shell Street, I talked to Jeff Pearson on it, just how it was going along. And as in any ongoing investigation, I'm very glad it's not in the paper, because that's not where it should be. They are handling it, it's ongoing, and until they find something, it won't be in the paper. But it is, they are working on it, and it is an ongoing investigation. Any, the floor is still open for any comments? Okay. Closing it, bring it back to Council, City Council comments.
Nothing.
Same.
I did attend an event at Satellite High School. It was called Decades Night. It did the 80s. It was pretty cool. The kids did a really neat job there with the teachers and so forth, and I did attend that, and it was very well attended. To let staff know, the meeting on the 31st, the school principal I spoke with, and he said he would be of any help he could getting the information out through their call system, and that if we needed him to do that, then he would be more than happy. And that's all I have. Thank you. City manager's report.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. As we just discussed, Chief Jeff Pearson, Sheriff Wayne Ivey, and State Attorney Phil Archer will be having an informative-style town hall meeting to discuss the crime trends and crime prevention topics at the Satellite Beach High School Auditorium on March 31st from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Every, it's a, it's a community-wide event and informative session. Some other items, some other things we have going on. Events in the city, March 28th, we're going to have an annual Fish Earth Day. It's a free event. The, it's the fourth annual Fish Earth Day. Youth will meet at the Satellite Beach Ponds at 8:30 AM for registration. The program begins at 9:00 AM and ends approximately at 11:00 AM. There will be instructions on casting, fishing techniques, habitat restoration, conservation, knot tying, and more. So, it's free, it's for ages 6 to 16 years old, and it's sponsored by Anglers for Conservation. But you must preregister by March 24th in the next couple of days at the Recreation Center. April 2nd, the Flashlight Egg Hunt. Children's 1st through 6th grades will hunt unassisted in the evening, in the dark, with flashlights. Bags will be provided for the eggs, and kids are to bring their own flashlights. It's $7 a child, and tickets can be purchased again at the Recreation Center by April 1st. And the event will take place at the De Soto Field at 8:45 PM, and the hunt begins at 9:00 PM. April 4th, we have a Breakfast with the Easter Bunny. This is for infants through 1st grade, the smaller children. There'll be donuts, they'll hunt eggs, and they'll watch the Easter Bunny arrive on a fire truck. And that event will be held at 10:00 AM at the Pelican Beach Park. Cost is, once again, $7 for child tickets and can be purchased in advance at the Recreation Department. You'll need to hurry up and get those tickets, they sell out quick. April 3rd and 4th is the PAL Garage and Bike Sale. The, will be held at the Teen Zone, and that's from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. It's a fundraiser for our Police Athletic League, and you can call 321-777-8336 to donate items and for more information. Just a busy April. So, April 25th and April 26th, the city is going to enter a Relay for Life team, basically citywide. Lenore, our city clerk, and myself are sort of spearheading that, so we'd like everybody and Council members and anybody from the general public to like to participate in the Relay for Life event that'll be held the 25th and 26th at the Satellite Beach High School. Right now, we're just kind of putting the team together. It's going to be the first time the city's put a team in, but it's really just a time for everybody to get together, and it's for a good cause, obviously, to battle cancer. And there's a website you can go to, to join, relayforlife.org, South Brevard County Beaches FL. I can give somebody if they're interested, or they can just get with Lenore and myself to join, to join our team. I've also, a letter came in, a letter of support for Roosevelt Avenue came in, you'll see in front of you at the, at the dais here. You can read through the letter. Basically, they're excited about the Roosevelt Reconstruction Plan. They had some suggestion on the use of native plants, if there's any landscaping to be done, and basically just supported the project, and we're happy the city is moving forward with that construction project. The only other item I have is an action item. Carrie from the Recreation Department can tell you more about it, but what we would like to do is put out a RFQ. We've had some interest from some local businesses and some other individuals that are interested in possibly providing some new programs and some things that are our skate park. As you know, it's slated in the CIP to make some improvements to the park, but these, these are some enthusiastic people that, and businesses that have said, hey, you know, we could probably manage the park for the city and make the park even better and get some more use out of it than what's currently being used. So, the city has said that we would look into that, and basically, we would just request the Council this evening to allow Carrie to draft an RFQ to bring back before the Council, to look at, see how we would structure the RFQ, to possibly have somebody come in to help manage the programs and manage the park, sort of a joint venture, basically with a private, with a private party. Carrie's here this evening. If she, you have any questions, she'd be more than happy to answer this for you.
Okay. Consensus, right? First, before we need consensus, let me ask, does anybody have any question, Carrie, concerning this or the park? Council? Okay, I, I think it's a good idea. I know we have been talking about it, and I know when it was tough to get kids to wear helmets and stuff, we were always worried there. I think this is probably a step in the right direction there. I know the park is used, skateboarders still very popular. So, do you want just consensus from us to?
That'd be fine.
Okay. At this time, let me open up for, since it's an action item, public hearing, a public comment, excuse me.
Dale Abrams, CRA resident. I didn't realize the city was going into joint venture entities. Are we a corporation now? You know, why don't we just outsource the whole thing? Let them just take the whole thing and manage the whole thing, and then maybe we can collect some money from them.
Well, part of this is to find out how this venture would work. It's an exploration. Carrie's going to put it out, and we'll get the information back, and then we will see if this is profitable to both the city and the individuals who are going to do it. And that's what we're doing. We're trying to find this out and make it work better than it is right now.
Okay. I mean, if they're willing to pay to upgrade the skateboard park, that would be wonderful. Okay? I know we have something in our CIP for this, it's long out there, I believe it's way out there in our CIP, if I can remember correctly, and correct me if I, I may be wrong, no?
No, I'm, we had some improvements to be done there.
In the CIP?
Yeah, I think it was next year, '17 or '18, what is it?
I believe probably '18, '19.
Okay. It was out there.
Right. And it would be wonderful if we could get them to pay for it. And maybe we can negotiate some type of a, a deal where, you know, they're going to lay out the money for the improvements, okay? And then, you know, maybe we get a little piece of the revenue that they generate. I mean, you also have to think about the liability insurance and all that kind of stuff, which I'm sure you guys are well aware of, but, you know, I know we could spend some money in other places, all right? It's not that I'm, I'm not against the skateboard park, I think it's a cool place. It does need some work, okay? But if we could encourage these people to go into their own pockets, okay? And then I don't know how this is going to affect our pricing structure that we currently have, maybe it'll all go away and they'll take care of it, all right? Is that what you?
Well, please direct it to hear if your question.
I'm done.
Okay, thank you very much.
The pricing structure.
Again, I, further comment on this action item here, and then back to Council. I think that's why we're going through this process, to see if it's going to work for both parties.
Yep. A lot of, yeah, a lot of Ms. Abrams' questions will be identified in the RFQ, which will come back before Council, so that will help clarify.
Consensus?
Yes.
Thank you. Any further report?
No, sir.
Thank you. We don't have it down here, but, do we have a city attorney? Anything to? I'm just throwing you in because I saw we didn't have a city attorney's report here, and normally we do. Okay, thank you. Okay. Just making sure we cover you. Okay, at this time, I'd like to open up a public hearing, discuss, take action on ordinance number 1101. Jim?
Ordinance number 1101, an ordinance of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, creating, establishing, and adopting a board handbook for all city boards, transferring findings, establishment, and other mandatory items required by law from city code to handbook as it relates to the Board of Adjustment, Code Enforcement Board, Planning and Zoning Advisory Board, Comprehensive Planning Advisory Board, repealing divisions 1, questions issued to board member communications, 2, Comprehensive Planning Advisory Board, 3, Library Board, 4, Recreation Board, 5, Sampson's Island Park Development Committee, and 6, Business Enhancement Committee of Article 3, Chapter 2, repealing Division 2, Code Enforcement Board of Article 8, Chapter 2, repealing Divisions 2, Board of Adjustment, 3, Planning and Zoning Advisory Board, and 4, Beautification Board of Article 2, Chapter 30, and repealing Sections 31-5 and 31-8, Article 1 of Chapter 31, Community Redevelopment Agency Advisory Committee, Satellite Beach City Code, amending Sections 46-36A and B and 46-61A and B, Satellite Beach City Code, by increasing terms of pension board members from 2 years to 3 years, repealing and rescinding all existing bylaws, charters, and rules of procedure currently in effect as it relates to any city board, providing severability providing an effective date, is the second reading of ordinance number 1101.
Thank you. Motion to?
Right, before we make any motion, I have some changes.
Okay.
If I may.
Okay.
First of all, Exhibit A will be this thing that you've got in your hand, minus the actual forms. It will end with this Section 5 list of the forms. That's Exhibit A. If you go to the second page.
Second page of your exhibit book?
Of the ordinance.
For the ordinance, okay.
I'm sorry. And the last sentence, the last line at the very top of the page, it says, "and may not be amended other than by ordinance." Actually, Section 1 is just city information, and will require some updating on that city profile and that kind of stuff from time to time. And Section 5 is just forms, which we may be interested in changing from time to time. So, the part that really needs to be changed only by ordinance is Sections 2, 3, and 4, because that's the meat of the information about the boards. And so, I would like to, and I've spoken with Attorney Beadle about this, and on the last line of that very top paragraph, it starts with ordinance and, after the word "and," add Sections 2, 3, and 4. "May not be amended other than by ordinance."
Excellent, okay. We're going to identify those three sections, is what we're doing. That can be.
Yeah, that, that have to be changed only by ordinance.
Right.
The other two sections we can change is meat B. If you look at Section 7, it talks about Section so-and-so A and B are amended, and then if you go to Section 8, it says Section A and B is amended. Is that A and B considered one section, or is it two sections?
Either way. Put, just put R, A-R-E.
Okay, so then R, the is in Section 8 should also be R. Those are the changes that I would make to the ordinance, and I would like for you to see, this is what the handbook will look like, when you have all of the backup documentation from our statutes and city code elsewhere. So, it's a pretty hefty document. And, but tonight, we're just voting on this Exhibit A.
Thank you very much.
And then after we deal with the ordinance, I have another request regarding this handbook.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Councilman, motion by Councilman Brymer, second by Councilman Osmer. At this time, I will open up for public comment on Agenda Item 6. Floor is open.
Ron Giugudis, resident Satellite Beach. Y'all are getting ready to vote on the A section. I understand that. What concerns me, and maybe I don't understand everything here, is the fact that the handbook is not, as of the last meeting, was not totally completed. And we're voting on something here in regards to the handbook, I will assume is completed now. And then my other concern is, how does the city relegate authority over the CRA Board, or as we call it, the crack committee, when I'm not sure that the CRA ruled on that? And correct me, if the CRA Board did rule on that, then I wonder whether the CRA should be involved with that.
Thank you. Public comments still open? Jim, the CRA Advisory Board is just that to us, and the CRA Board, I don't think we're making any policies for them, we are just.
Yeah, I mean, basically, all you're doing is moving the stuff from the code book and containing all of the requirements in the handbook, which is why it's being adopted as an ordinance. That, that, that deals with all the other boards as well as because of what, that's why the handbook's being approved by ordinance.
Thank you.
But you're not changing anything of substance.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilman Goddard, you said you'd like to say something after the vote or before?
I'll go ahead and take the vote on the motion.
Okay, thank you. Before you vote, Lorraine?
I've said this once, I'll say it again. Thank you for your efforts on this. I mean, the hours you put into this, and I know you've had some help with it, but you've been the leader in this process, and, you know, on behalf of, at least myself anyhow, and I'm sure many, many others, thank you so much for what you've done.
Well, Lorraine, thank you. I know it's been a long time, and the number of hours has just been incredible, and it's something we have needed for a long time, and I'm glad we finally got to this point, and I know you are too. Thank you. Lenore?
Councilman Goddard? Yes. Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Brymer?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes, motion carries. Floor is yours.
And I would like to thank Lenore and Barbara Montanaro and John Fergus for the assistance that they gave me in pulling this thing together. If you will look at page 2-8 in your Exhibit A. And the last thing on that page, it says Parliamentary Guide, and then on the opposite side is kind of a summary of various motions and whatnot. I looked through a lot of material, trying to find something that would do a good job of providing all of the motions that any of our boards might need to use. And I wasn't happy with any of it. But I would like to keep this summary chart in there. But in addition, Lenore got obtained price quotes for this little book. I know you've all seen this before. It's actually pretty good, and I would really like to provide this to board members in addition to this, and between the two of them, I think they've covered the waterfront. The cost on these, I figured that currently now, we have approximately 100 members, and the price point runs from 100 to 499 copies at $1.13 apiece. And I would like to ask the Council to authorize our purchasing, maybe starting out with 150 copies, that will cover everybody we have now, plus new ones, and that cost would be $169.50. And then, from that point on, the city clerk can just order more as they're needed. But I, I do think that this is helpful.
How much you said it was going to cost for?
150 would be $169.50.
Okay.
And that could come out of the mayor's fund.
Question, does it, can we, we make this a, an agenda item for the next council meeting?
Is it that big a deal?
It's not on here, so I would.
Well, you can add things.
I, I can, but I want to, I'd like to learn a little more about it than just being told right now. Not that I'm not for it, but I, I personally think it should be put on as an, as an agenda item if we're going to spend, spend the money. And 150 some dollars is not a lot of money, but I would sure think we need to have it as an agenda item, but I'm just want a voice here.
I support it, but if you'd like to have it as an agenda item, that's certainly to be discussed, Frank. It's fine, yeah. That's fine.
You know, it probably would be a bad idea, not, not only for the reason that if somebody else may want to see it, and you may, if you want more support, yes, we're all for it.
I'm, I'm going to put it on as an agenda item. Thank you. Any further discussion on it? Councilman's got one question, what's the name of the book, so we further up?
It's the ABC's of Parliamentary Procedure.
Thank you.
You see it everywhere.
Yeah.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to close the public hearing and move on to Agenda Item 7, discuss, take action on ordinance 1102. Jim?
Ordinance number 1102, an ordinance of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending Sections 58-151 and 58-159 of Satellite Beach City Code of Ordinances, raising the utility tax in the sale and purchase of electricity, meter, natural gas, liquid petroleum gas, and manufactured gas from 6% to 10%, providing an effective date is the first reading of ordinance number 1102.
Okay. Discussion from Council?
Okay. Before you vote on it, there's a blank space in, in Section 58-159, the effective date of the tax. And speaking with Andy, it's supposed to be for meter readings and sales commencing July 1, 2015, is that correct?
Yeah.
Commencing July 1, 2015. So, instead of saying sales after, it'll say sales commencing July 1.
Okay. Any more discussion from Council? This time, open up Agenda Item 7 for public hearing. This time, open up Agenda Item Seven for public hearing.
Ron Jagudis, Satellite Beach resident. Can somebody explain to me what manufactured gas is?
Thank you. Can anybody answer that?
I don't think we, LP, you know, liquid petroleum, the, the.
Process, yeah.
What?
LPG and manufactured gas.
Yeah, it's the same. I think it's almost close, not a very big difference, but I don't believe we have any of that anyways.
We'll, we'll get you an answer for that. And again, remember, this is a first reading.
Right, because there's also concern in regards to manufactured gases in the changing and evolving energy world, this could have huge ramifications on some forms of gases.
Okay, we'll take a look at it and have that answer for you. Thank you.
Dale Abrams, CRA resident. I was going through some documents today regarding the financial advisor, and in those documents, it says 2 million. Are we, because I know we're raising money, we're raised, we're going to be borrowing money, and that money is going to be utilized for this project, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right, until we start collecting the utility tax, I don't know how that money comes in. Do you get that money every month? Do you get it every quarter? Do you get it once a year? I don't know how that works, okay? So my question is, is it 2.5 million or is it 2 million that we're looking at as far as some type of a loan? Okay? And then the other thing is, is that I was under the impression that the stormwater utility fund, which we just increased from $65 a year to 104 for residential, that money was supposed to be earmarked for stormwater projects. Now, I read something today on Channel 13 that said that it was road and stormwater. Okay?
Let me ask the question you just said. The money that's earmarked for stormwater from the stormwater fund is used only for stormwater.
Okay.
Okay? Is only for stormwater.
Okay. Will there be a stormwater project on Roosevelt?
There could be a stormwater project on Roosevelt from the standpoint of piping, if there's pipes there that need to be replaced. As we've said, and I know you were at the meetings that we had, that when we are looking at road projects, we're not going to tear a road up, put a new surface down, if there's old piping there that will not support stormwater for the future. We're going to take a look at each individual road project as it comes up and stormwater project.
That makes a great sense.
We've said that all along, I think that's been.
All right, that makes a lot of sense. So as of right now, you don't know what kind of condition those stormwater pipes are underneath Roosevelt. So when you start tearing things up and you see that things need to be replaced or repaired or slip lined or any one of these terms, then you will do that, and that will be done with the money from the stormwater utility fund, correct?
Depending on the project, okay? This particular fund had, this particular borrow that we are doing with this is going to have some stormwater involved in it. There's going to be a slip lining of the Glenwood trunk line is going to be part of this funds, okay?
I understand that part. I'm talking about Roosevelt right now.
Well, Roosevelt, Alan's not here to tell me on the piping, but we have said on all our streets, if there's stormwater to be done, we're not going to repave twice. We're going to take a look at the stormwater piping on any streets that we do to make sure that the piping there before we pave over it needs to be replaced. So I'm going to stop there on your question, because if Alan was here, I'm sure he could tell us more, but they have looked at all of this on the streets.
Okay, are we also looking at grants?
Oh, as always, in all our projects through the years, we didn't get $21 million of grants in the city by not trying. We are always looking for grants for these projects.
And they usually are matching grants, correct?
Well, there's some grants we've gotten, there hasn't been matching. But yes, there are grants that are matching. That's why if we get this money and these funds, we'll have the funds to match and also help us in the cost of this.
Okay. Can you tell me who currently is doing your grant writing?
I think it's done in-house now, just at particular departments. We don't have a grant writer the way we used to in the past, okay? I'll take one more question because the buzzer went off.
Okay.
Thank you. Public comment portion is still open? Do not back the council? I'm going to say one thing on this particular aspect. We've had four meetings already.
Yep.
And the turnout has been very, very good to the meetings. And I've had a lot of people approach me and say, hey, why not add the alarm, why not this? But I've had so many people say that, you know, thank you for coming out, thank you for showing us this, that we need to do these repairs. And I've heard a lot of positive, and again, the letters that we're getting and people talking to me, I think we approached this correctly. And I know there's a lot of roads that need to be done, and, but I think this is the start to, you know, the way to get better roads and infrastructure in the city. But I mean, the turnout's been great at the meetings. We have one more, and the comments that I'm hearing, people approaching us, has been all positive.
And I've gotten a lot of questions about the information in this same regard, and it's in the Beechcaster, and the comments have been that that was very thorough. It generates more questions, and there may be some people come to our next meeting to ask some more questions. But the whole process seems to have been moved forward really well, Frank.
I think it has, you know, I hate to, I always say we need money, but in this case, we're putting to something that, you know, I looked at it and looked at some of the roads that people had said that hadn't been done in 50 years. So I took it and said, okay, really, a road in the city lasts 45 years, and it takes us 15 years to pay for that road. That means we've got a road for 30 years, we're not paying for it. I have questions. So I think the return is good, because these roads, some of them have been here since, you know, I grew up in town, it was early 60s. And I know the Roosevelt project, I was talking to Alan before the meeting, you know, people live here know that that particular quartz and so forth filled with water. And we've always had problems there, that was a concrete road, a major road through the city. And I've heard more people say, you know, great job, we need it, that don't live on that street. So hopefully, we're going in the right direction, I think we are, so.
Move to adopt ordinance 1102 as amended on first reading.
I have a motion by Councilman Godd, do I have a second? Second by Councilman Brymer. Any further discussion?
I would just like to say, Mr. Mayor, I have not received one person, one phone call, one email from anybody that was opposed to this as of yet, or like you said, at any one of the meetings. And I have not had one person say, I don't like this. None. And as the letter has proven, I've seen more people state that they want it. I think their more concern than I heard from anybody was, get it and get it started because I want to see something happen, that they didn't want this to be a four-year down-the-road thing, so they wanted to see that. But I have, personally have not got one negative about this at all.
I think we put the information out there well, and. And I, this is, this is a compliment directed at you, Frank. I think the manner at which you've delivered this at these meetings has been very good. You've stepped back and done the historical thing, and I think that's helped a lot. I see, I've seen people kind of understand that process when they know how far it's come, and you use your 50-year analogy type of thing. So I think your approach to this has helped soften some of this as well as, so I think that's why it kind of supports everything that Steve just said, is that you're kind of on key with this stuff, and I'll leave it at that.
Well, thank you very much. Further discussion? Here in honor, Lenore?
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Brymer?
Yes.
Councilman Godd?
Yes.
Mayor Cuttino?
Yes, motion passes. That'll be the first reading, our next meeting, we'll have the second. Moving on now to Agenda Item Eight, discuss, take action on request for proposal for financial advisory service. Andy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city council approved a request for proposal for financial advisory services on January 21st. The city received two proposals in response to the RFP that was advertised on February 24th. The two companies that submitted responses to the proposal consisted of the following: Public Financial Management Incorporated out of Orlando, Florida, and First Southwest out of Orlando, Florida. On March 10th, the selection committee that was comprised of Jennifer Howland, Christine Fane, and Danny Peters, heard presentations from both financial advisory companies. After scoring each firm in accordance with the RFP, the company that scored the highest was Public Financial Management. The managing director, Jay Glover, is here this evening to answer any questions you may have. PFM has extensive knowledge of providing financial advisory services to municipalities throughout the state of Florida, as well as local municipalities here in Brevard County. The city is not obligated to utilize the financial advisor and would not pay for services only if requested by the city based on the contracted amounts that have been provided to you. Of course, this step is just to approve the RFP, select PFM to begin contract negotiations to, to talk about all the details, I guess, and the city attorney and PFM would, would draft that agreement to, for services, I would imagine, and bring that back before the city council. So there's no budget impacts by selecting them as your financial advisor, they're available. They do work on an hourly rate, as you'll see in the proposal. PFM was comparative to First Southwest, I believe some of the fees were just a little bit cheaper, but the hourly rate was right in line with the other company that proposed. They were, they were a good company as well. So we had two good companies, I think, the major players for municipalities as far as financial advisors, both submitted RFPs. What you, what I've attached is the proposal from PFM and then also the committee scoring sheets. So the, based on the committee score, after hearing both presentations and looking through the proposals, the committee ranked PFM, and city staff would recommend selecting PFM to move forward with the contractual agreements with PFM for financial advisor services.
Senator Prince, selection of Public Financial Management Incorporated to provide financial advisory services to the city.
Second.
And if I can, just to make some clarification, the one reason that we are looking to bring a financial advisor on is because to work us through some of these issues that, you know, after the second reading of the utility tax, would trigger the fact that we now need to go out and find how, the funding mechanism to fund the projects. So we don't want to approach this, you know, we're not professionals in the industry, you know, so we need to deal with professionals in the industry that will help us save money, get the right language in contracts, deal with banks or issue bonds, and make those recommendations to the city council so they can make an informed decision. So that's why we've decided to go out and to do what other cities do when it comes to large amounts of money and borrowing.
A motion by Councilman Godd, second by Councilman Osmer. Questions from the council? I have one, Jay, just real quick, please. Just to ease my mind on how you would handle it. Here we have 2.5 million or thereabouts coming to us. To get this money, and obviously, some of these projects, we're not going to need the 2.5 million day one we get it. But obviously, the way a loan would be structured for the best interest rate, I'm sure, to secure it for us, we'd need to get the money all at once. What do we do with the money we don't?
Yeah, Mayor, council members, Jay Glover from Public Financial Management, a managing director with the firm, I've been with for 15 years, and as Andy mentioned, specialize in working on debt transactions for local governments. Just to mention a couple we work with, City of Melbourne here, City of Titusville, City of Cocoa Beach, so we do a lot of work in the area and around the state. As it specifically rates your question, you can actually do it one of two ways. Some banks will actually let you structure more like a line of credit, that you can draw the funds down over time as they're needed. Typically, if you do that, though, during the draw period, you're going to pay interest at a variable rate on what's been drawn. And then once the projects are completed, you can term it out over the long term via a fixed rate. So obviously, that's one route. Another route is drawing the funds down at closing. And essentially, what you would do with those is then you'd just be investing them in the market until you needed them. And as you likely know, investment rates are very low on the short end of the yield curve, so there's a lot of what we call negative arbitrage to doing that. But there's really no way to mitigate that negative arbitrage, because you're really going to be restricted in what you can invest those bond proceeds in, because obviously, safety and liquidity are your first two things you look at, and then yield is the third thing you look at on that investment. So once we get to dig into the details, we can look at which way's better to do it, either you draw it down over time, or you lock in the fixed rate today upfront. The one downside to potentially the line of credit, it sounds good because you can draw down funds over time, but if in that year or two years, you're spending the money, interest rates rise up, you know, then you go to term it out over 15 years, you're going to be paying a higher interest rate than you would if you locked in the long-term fixed rate today. And long-term rates are near historic lows, so you might be better off actually drawing that down, incurring that negative arbitrage in that construction fund. And those are the kind of things we look at, run sensitivity analysis to make a recommendation to you which one might be best.
Thank you very much. Any further questions? At this time, open up Agenda Item Eight for public comment.
Ron Jagudis, resident Satellite Beach. I see here this agenda item, there's no budget impact for passing this right now. I will assume there will be a budget impact as the contract arises. Is that a correct statement?
That's correct. Correct statement.
And of course, I'm sure will lead into amending the budget, but that's a whole other issue, a whole other animal. And when the contract is, first of all, I'd like to say that I'm kind of surprised that there was only internal staff on this committee to select a group to represent. I would have thought that it would have been considered to include residents of this community in the selection process at minimum, ad hoc committee for a short period of time, that could have galvanized this better than it stands right now, although everyone seems to be happy with it. But I'm a little upset that citizens were not involved in this committee, and I think that should have been done. Additionally, I'd like to know if the contractual obligation that is entered to, that whatever documents are prepared and whatever, whatever is shopped around out there, that the city has the right to shop in itself too at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment portion is still open on this agenda item.
Dale Abrams, resident of the CRA. I concur with Ron regarding the committee. I think it would have been appropriate to have someone from the community, a citizen, on this committee, considering we, the citizens, are going to be paying for this through our I thank Mr. Glover for coming here. I spent quite a bit of time on his website along with the other company. I've learned a lot of different things regarding this financial advisory services as far as how it works, and I hope that the council and the mayor read through these documents very carefully, okay? Because you are going to be putting us into a financial situation going forward where, you know, we're going to be responsible for paying this money back, okay? And I.
And I suggest that everybody learn about swap agreements, too.
Thank you. Public comment is still open? Here are none, back to council. I have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? I'm sure we're gonna, Jim, we'll get all the information and then be able to.
There's supposed to be a contract.
Contract, right. At this point, we're, we're not there. Okay. Thank you. Any further comment from council? Here are none. Lenore?
Councilman Brymer?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman McGaw?
Yes.
Mayor Cuttino?
Yes, motion passes. For three, moving on to Agenda Item Nine, Discuss Take Action on a Grant Proposal for a Portable Light Tower Generator.
Uh, thank you. This is just an opportunity that became available several months ago. We were notified by our, our insurance company, Preferred Governmental Insurance Trust, that they provided a matching grant, uh, that reimburses its members, um, up to five thousand dollars per coverage year for the purchase of training and safety-related products. Um, the Public Works Department, obviously, um, has some interest in the grant and is recommending utilizing the matching grant opportunity to purchase a, some sort of portable light tower. The example you have is not the actual one that we may purchase, but we have to get a preliminary approval from them, and then they will allow us to purchase in conceptual what we want. Um, the city recently discovered a concern during the manatee rescue where additional lighting would've provided a safer work environment for city employees and those involved with the incident. The portable tower, uh, along with the generator, would also be beneficial during other emergencies that occur after dark, and provide safety during special events held in the evening. The city's requesting up to five thousand from Preferred Governmental Insurance Trust for the purchase of a light tower generator, similar to the one provided in the grant application. The city would provide the matching portion of the grant from the capital assets, uh, fund balance to make this purchase. If the grant is awarded, the city staff would bring back the complete purchase of the equipment for council approval. Um, there would be, uh, no, the, the budget impact at this time, you're not approving the purchase, so there'd be no impact to the budget. We'll bring that back before the council, once we get a yes or no from the insurance company. Um, and then I've attached the grant application, it's a very basic grant application, that would be submitted to the insurance company. I did reach out to them, because it was a safety-related, uh, grant and training, and I sent them the conceptual idea, and they said, great, you know, submit it to us, it's a great idea, we'd love to, uh, help you guys with that if that's what the city council decides.
Are you asking us to approve, uh, to authorize submitting it?
Submitting the grant, yes, ma'am.
So, Lou.
I have, uh, a motion by councilman Gott, second by councilman Brymer. Um, for the discussion from council?
Um, Andy, the big question is, with something like this, we'll keep this inside someplace, is that correct? It won't be stored outside?
No, it'll be inside.
Okay.
They're pulled behind, uh, with the trailer.
Okay.
Also, the generator portion of it provides, you know, would provide the electrical outlets versus plugging into a, uh, you know, regular socket-type thing at an event, so it would be a little bit safer there, too, but the main thing was just the lighting, having affordable lighting, you're in a place with lots of hurricanes, traffic signals go out, uh, provide a more brighter light and, and more ready, available light than what we have now. I think we currently just have, short of the shop lights.
I, I know the mayor remembers back when we had all those hurricanes, this thing would've been very helpful back then, I mean, A-1A was a dark place with lights hanging down, that sort of thing, that the police officers were trying, so I think it'd be a great idea, is my point.
I, I think, you know, I was out there during that whole evening with the manatee, and I'm, I know I was not the only one who asked that question, is, we don't have any lights? I, I don't know how many times, I know, Andy, you were out there, you heard the same comments being made by citizens, by, you know, other city staff, and I was, and I was kinda shocked, and like, we don't have one of these somewhere, and I think you make a good point, especially with hurricanes and other stuff out here, um, it's definitely, definitely helpful, and, and again, if you can get a, a grant to help with that, it's always, you know, the best way to go, as opposed to trying to dig it all out of our own pocket, so I, I think it's a definitely a good idea.
Thank you. I was out there, too, for a very long time with the manatees, and I think one of the things Andy and I talked about is, you know, that's one thing we were missing. Uh, you know, we did have lights on a fire truck, but you tied up a fire truck that, you know, some other instance, you're not gonna have, and, uh, so it definitely is a safety and definitely if we can get five thousand dollars towards it, I'll take, you know, grants to do it, but I think it's a definitely a safety item for the city. At this time, open up for public comment on this agenda item. Here are none, closed, uh, on a portion, bring it back to council. Uh, any further discussion? Here are none. Lenore?
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Brymer?
Yes.
Councilman McGaw?
Yes.
Mayor Cuttino?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Ten, um, Agenda Items for our next regular council meeting. Remember, we have the public meeting, March thirtieth, um, at seven, okay? And then our council meeting is on the first, and there are some agenda items in second readings. Anything else, please get with Andy or Courtney on additions. Okay? All righty. Uh, moving on to Agenda Item Eleven, Adoption of Minutes for the February tenth, two thousand fifteen workshop handbook meeting, the February eighteenth regular meeting, and a March fourth regular meeting.
Okay, a few minutes submitted.
Councilman Gott, motion. Second by councilman Osmer. Any further discussions? Here are none. Lenore?
Councilman Brymer?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman McGaw?
Yes.
Mayor Cuttino?
Yes. Motion passes. Um, any further business?
No, sir.
For council? Here are none. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, Seth.
You were hoping to.
I was hoping to.